City Council Budget and Appropriations Committee, we're here for fiscal year 2020 budget for Parking Authority of Baltimore City. I'm Eric Costello, councilman from the 11th District, Chair of the Committee. To my immediate left is Vice Chair of the Committee, Councilman Leon Pinkett from the 7th District. To his left, Councilman Ryan Dorsey, 3rd District. To my right, Council Vice President Sharon Green Middleton, 6th District, Member of the Committee. Councilwoman Shannon Snead, 13th District, Member of the Committee. Councilman John Bullock, 9th District. Pete, if you could introduce your senior team and then take it away. Please keep your presentation in about 10 minutes if possible.
Will do. So with me today are Sandra Downs, who's our Chief Financial Officer. Immediately to my right, to her right is David Rhodes, General Counsel for the Parking Authority. And to his right is Candace New, Chief Operating Officer of the Parking Authority. And my name is Pete Little, Executive Director with the Parking Authority of Baltimore City. So just quickly here, the Parking Authority is the city's parking asset manager. We manage the on-street and off-street parking assets of the city. We are a quasi-governmental 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization managing the city's parking assets. And we manage the city's off-street garages and lots, I should say, the revenue-producing garages and lots. We also manage the city's parking meter program, residential permit parking program, residential reserved handicap parking program, valet parking regulations, and also, we develop parking plans for various areas of the city. And we implement and find and implement parking demand management strategies such as car sharing here in the city. So some of our major budget items in our initiatives for fiscal year 2020 include the introduction of pay-by-cellphone or mobile payment services for metered parking in the city, the introduction of pay-by-license plate multi-space parking meters. We'll actually begin introduction of those in late, or I should say, in July, so starting right off in the new fiscal year. We will be piloting virtual permit parking for residential permit parking areas in fiscal year 2020. And we are also going to continue to renovate and do capital projects at a number of the city-owned garages in order to maintain them. And we've listed a few of the garages that are going to have major renovations this year, including the two that are closest here to City Hall. So just a couple of our performance measures. One is the number of parking permits that we distribute. And we will see that number climb again this year as certain residential permit parking areas expand. And it's likely that we're going to be adding a new residential permit parking area in Riverside this year. And the other measure is the revenue collected annually per parking space at city-owned garages. So the fiscal year 2020 number reflects the leasing of three garages to Medco this past year. And then falling revenues due to ride-sharing's effect on parking demand. We are seeing less transient and less event revenue as a result of ride-sharing, and then, to a lesser extent, the poor performance of the Orioles. So with that, any questions?
Councilman Dorsey?
Thanks. We're going to ask just the whole gamut of parking questions at this time, or do we have other people that are going to?
Pardon?
We're going to cover kind of the whole gamut of Parking Authority issues at this moment?
Yes, yep. And we've got them until 12 o'clock, I believe. We've got lunch from 12 to 12:30. And we have, Chief Goodwin is here from DOT in a support capacity. We did do DOT last evening, but I'm sure the chief would be happy to answer anything that he can.
Thank you.
Take it away, sir.
Why, do we have anything to which we can attribute the decline in parking revenues per space?
Well, it does reflect the fact that we leased three garages to Medco. So that's a factor, Marriott, Redwood, and Water Street garages. But also, we're seeing a decline in transient and event revenue because of the effect of ride-sharing on parking demand.
So are you saying that is the, is the value of the leasing of the garages not reflected in the FY '20 target?
It is reflected.
It is reflected, so...
That's why it's lower, yep.
So that, okay, so it significantly decreased the value per space to us?
Of the remaining garages, yes.
Yeah.
Yep.
I wanted to ask about the kind of devaluing of on-street parking, particularly in the downtown area, due to city-owned and city-employee-owned vehicles. Both ones that are part of the DGS-maintained fleet that are obviously, have the city emblem on the side of them, the city seal on the side of them, as well as vehicles that are privately owned that have a sticker, a decal or whatever that...
Official business permit.
That's issued to private vehicle owners. I'm sure, I can say without any doubt, that if I walk across the street right now in front of the Abel Womack Building, there is more than one city-owned vehicle parked in a metered parking space in front of that building. That is, you know, taking up that space that a citizen who is coming there to pay their water bill or property tax bill can't use because it's occupied by the city-owned vehicle. Do we have any way of calculating the loss of revenue or the negative impacts of allowing these vehicles to use those parking spaces? Or others, similarly, on, say, Baltimore Street on the other side of the Benton Building?
Currently, we don't have the means to calculate how much revenue might be lost associated with it. That would take a great deal of manual data collection, and between the Department of Transportation ourselves, we don't have the manpower to be able to collect that data manually. However, I did mention that we are moving to a virtual permit parking system for residential permit parking. The plan is ultimately to bring virtual party, part of virtual permit parking or using that license plate as an identifier to official business permits as well, too. Once that program is established, we'll be able to collect that sort of data much more efficiently to get a handle on, number one, who might be abusing those official business permits. And there are regulations for their use that are printed right on the application and the permits themselves. So, number one, who's abusing that? And then, number two, what that loss of revenue might be. But right now, it would be far too expensive to collect that data.
Do we have any calculation on the value of what I would consider a subsidy that's given to city employees who are issued a decal to park their vehicles? So I know that there are at least several hundred employees who have a parking benefit where they're allowed, like city council members, a parking space in a city-owned garage. And that is a, some, you know, an official way of conferring a parking benefit of a sort. But there are also these decals that are issued. Can you speak to the policy by which decals are issued?
Yeah, well, it's, the application needs to be completed by the agency themselves and signed off on by the agency head in order to get an official business permit. And the current fee, I know it went up this year, Candace, what's it currently at?
Seventy-five.
$175 for each official business permit, which then the agency has to pay for those permits. And the regulation's really pretty simple. It's only supposed to be used for official business purposes and isn't intended to be used to park all data, commute into work. So, and that's made clear in the letter that's sent with the application on the application So, I mean, what it was really intended to do was to, you know, if you're, if you're conducting city business, say you're, you know, a liquor board inspector and you're coming to inspect a bar in a metered area, so that you wouldn't have to then pay the meter and then be reimbursed by your agency for that payment at the meter, you know, it then bypasses having to go through that process and taking the money from, you know, one city agency to another. So I understand the intent, but, you know, it does get abused.
Can you...
So the value, I'm sorry, I didn't really get at your question. I mean, the value of like that parking on a daily basis, I mean, you could, you could say that the average value of a monthly contract in that given area is the actual value of it, if in fact they're using it that way.
Can you provide us an account of the spaces, the decals?
Number of permits?
The number of permits, yeah.
Yep. Now, we are going through the process of renewal. They all expired July 1st.
And so they're, it's an annual fee paid by an agency, and it's a flat rate, no matter what the agency, there's only one, there are not variations to it?
There are no variations, no exceptions.
It's 175 bucks per vehicle? But there are no controls, there are no real controls in place for, say, if somebody was driving that car to downtown, you know, to work their day, their job at the Benton Building and they were parking it at a meter? I probably want to ask Toby about that.
That would be very difficult to enforce. You could speak to it, but I know just from personal experience, that would be very difficult to enforce, given the hard permits that we have right now. If we moved to virtual permit parking and we're able to enforce that using vehicle-mounted license plate recognition cameras, it would be made much simpler.
Such enforcement would still not be conducted by Parking Authority, right? It would be conducted by TEOs at DOT?
That's correct.
With, even with the license plate stuff?
Well, we'd obviously coordinate so that if they see examples of abuse, if the notification from us to that user that they needed to stop that abuse would come from us. So we do a lot of that coordination.
Okay. I would like to ask Toby if I could, Mr. Chair?
Please.
Thank you.
Good morning, sir. Toby Goodwin, DOT Safety.
Hey, man.
How you doing, sir?
I'm great. Can you speak to this at all? I mean...
So the process that was introduced was that if we come upon a vehicle with a city permit on it, we allow them the time on the meter. We will make an observation, record the observation of the time that we see the vehicle on the meter, and then we will come back at the expired time, and if they're still there, they will receive a ticket if they're gone.
Is there any, just maybe in practice or under any policy, is there kind of leeway given to folks to park on the street? I mean, I know I've walked down Baltimore Street and seen vehicles parked in the bus lane across the street from the state's attorney's office, and they just have something in the windshield that says that they're, somebody from the state's attorney's office, but they're obstructing the bus lane.
If the vehicle is violating the parking laws, they get cited. If the vehicle is on a meter, we allow for the time of the meter.
Do we have any way of accounting for citations specifically given to city-owned or city-permitted vehicles?
No, sir, because what we basically would do, they would make a note on the citation, on the handheld, that there was a expired meter, and they may possibly write in the note that it was a city permit on it. But that's rare that they'll do it, they'll just cite it for the violation.
We're in the process of getting new handheld devices for parking enforcement. Did that, did we get to make specifications for different things that we wanted in the device when we were putting out, I guess, some sort of RFP or...
We have the equipment onboard now, we're just not, it's not operational due to the unfortunate situation that the city engaged. We do have the capabilities of having LPR with each handheld. We have not looked into or suggested any other type of mechanism or element to support the request that you're making. Certainly can ask them.
Yeah, I'm interested in whether or not we could cross-reference a database of citations that have been given and the vehicle license numbers with vehicles that are city-owned or vehicles that have had a official city business permit issued to them. If we could cross-reference these things and then understand whether or not traffic enforcement ever gives tickets to city-owned vehicles.
Oh, I can tell you, Mr. Councilman, they do get tickets.
Because I see illegally parked cop cars, like, left and right, and I have a high level of doubt that, is the police department paying any citations to parking enforcement for any citations that are given to...
They have to pay for them. If not, then they ultimately, I mean, we've had a situation where a vehicle came up on the SCARFLA list.
We had, like, you mean like, like a police cruiser that could, that...
I'm trying to remember...
That like had a boot put on it?
I'm trying to remember if it was a police cruiser or a city vehicle, but one city vehicle did come up on our SCARFLA list. And the agency had to process to release that car.
There is a policy... There is a policy in place for any city vehicles which receive tickets. They come through...
Yeah, just speak more directly into it.
It comes through on a billing we will get from the city that says this vehicle was given a ticket, and then we have to go to the employee to have the employee pay that ticket if they're responsible for it. But I think that maybe in the collections, based on them having that information, they send it out to agencies, letting them know that a ticket had been issued, so.
I mean, similar to our RealLife camera program. A city-owned vehicle receives a RealLife camera citation, it goes to the driver of that vehicle, that owner, I mean, that driver is responsible for paying that ticket and not the agency.
And then, there was an issue that came up several weeks ago where the person who is, this is, this is probably more for finance and for collection, revenue collections. There was an issue that came up a couple of weeks ago where the city schools employee who happens to be tasked with like paying parking violations for city school vehicles or something like that, was having difficulty paying citations online, but in, and in reporting to us that, that he was having this difficulty because of a malfunction with the server or something like that, that it became apparent that this is a city employee who is like sitting at a desk, sometimes paying 20 or 30 or 40 citations at a time, and having to individually, manually, enter all the data into an individual like credit card transaction over and over and over again for each one of these. Is it not possible for the city to set up some sort of batch payment method with anybody within city government, city agencies that may have somebody doing this?
Yeah, I don't know the answer to that, but we can, we should direct you to our revenue collections. We can get you a name, probably put that as a, as a direct follow-up, get you the person who manages the online payment system to see what the possibilities are.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm not sure who the, who the right person would be, but I think we can direct you to the technical contact.
Yeah, thank you. Pete, were you guys impacted by the cybersecurity incident?
Mr. Chair, I apologize. Just before we move on, I had a couple of requests from Councilman Dorsey. I want to make sure we log them correctly.
Please.
So, Councilman Dorsey, I've got request number 57 here, accounting of all agency street parking permits. Just, you wanted the whole list all the way through?
Specifically, the official business permits, because I'm going to ask a different question about parking benefits that are not based on those permits, and I don't want to conflate the two.
Telegraphing your punches, I like that. Request number 58, cross-referencing citations given to vehicles that are city-owned or have the city issued permits, to just check to make sure that those citations are actually being issued. And then finally, the finding out with finance about whether or not an online batch payment system might be an option for city agencies. All right, and so, Councilman Costello, that was request number 59. Next one would be request number 60.
Thank you. Were you guys impacted by the cybersecurity incident?
We were not directly. We have separate servers, all of our other systems, residential permit parking, our off-street parking, the garage parking access, revenue control equipment, our other systems are all separate.
Perfect.
We were indirectly affected in some ways, but not directly affected.
Okay. I want to revisit the issue that we've talked about in the past, David, about having access to the RPP database during emergency situations. So for example, there was a water main break 500 block of Cathedral Street. There were three vehicles. I called Steve. Steve is fantastic, Steve Robinson, but he's not available 24/7, nor should he be expected to be. And it, you know, I think Steve got back to me in like 15 or 20 minutes, but that's time that someone is without water service, and we're trying to prevent vehicles who are not illegally parked but just happen to be parked where an emergency happens, no fault to their own, to get relocated. And it makes it a lot easier, as Chief Goodwin knows, when we're trying to get vehicles relocated, if people just come out and move the vehicles themselves, right? Saves city money. What do we need to do to make that happen?
From the legal perspective, I would certainly want to speak with the Law Department to see what could be shared and how it should be shared operationally. That's, that's an internal thing that I think we could work out. So it's just establishing what we are allowed to share and how we could share that, and internally, how that would happen.
Yeah. Can we get, and you've always been responsive to me, so please don't take this the wrong way, but could we get as a request back some, some communication in writing from you and from one of your counterparts at City Law Department on what type of law change we need to make that happen? Because, and I always bring this up after an emergency, and then I have 82 things the next day and I forget about it.
That fades, yeah.
But I really want to tackle that issue this year.
Happy to.
Okay. Councilwoman Snead?
From an operational perspective, just to answer that part of it, you know, again, we'll have to check the legal aspects, but I do think that operationalizing that access wouldn't be difficult because, you know, it's, it's, our service is in the web, so you'd be able to tap into that database if you were given that authorization from anywhere.
Okay. Yeah, I just, I want to be able to have a RPP decal with the area number and the four-digit serial number on it, and be able to punch that into some web portal, and for it to tell me who it is, where they live, a phone number, and email, so that I can get in touch with that person and get them to move their car.
That sounds reasonable.
Thank you. Councilwoman Snead?
My question is related to the RPP zones as well, but I'm more so interested in, it seems like we need more people, in my district anyway, around Hopkins...
To enforce, you mean?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Is that all over the city? Is that a problem?
Enforcement is part of Department of Transportation, not the Parking Authority, so Chief Goodwin probably is the better person to answer that question.
Oh, yes, I forgot about that. Can you, is, how many people do we have in that position for enforcement?
Right now, we have approximately 125 personnel.
And are we fully staffed?
No, ma'am.
So how many vacant positions do we have?
We're checking this morning, I believe we should have eight.
Eight positions, but would that still be enough to tackle?
To be very honest with you, no.
No.
We're in the process, as I mentioned last evening, we're bringing on some parking control agents because we're trying to help with the very area that you're talking about, the RPP zones. So we're going to have some dedicated folks that we're going to put in those zones around the city to try to offset the other responsibilities. Because when, when you look at our daily operation, as was asked last night, we start out at 6:00 in the morning, and I send my teams to do restricted parking, that's the inbound, the 7 to 9 timeframe. They go from there to street clean, and from there they go to 311. And from there, they go to RPP. So we overlap our, our resources to make sure we cover each aspect of the day, but we need more personnel to really focus on the RPP zones. I would say out of the 47, it's probably about 20 of them that we really need to focus on, on a daily basis. But I need personnel to really do that, because if I dedicate all my resources now to RPP, then you're going to have me standing before you asking why I'm not responding to 311 complaints.
Right.
Because we get a large volume of 311 complaints throughout the day.
Got it.
From as early as 7:00 a.m. till as late as 10:00 p.m.
Yeah, I'm sure some of those are my constituents. But, okay, thank you.
But we are, we are trying to address it. We have 10 people right now that we're trying to bring on from the job fair that we had on April 13th. They've been approved by the police department. We're now sending them up for fiscal, so hopefully we can get them onboard.
Yeah, I'm just, while I'm not a fan of people getting tickets, I want them to do the right thing, but the constituents keep saying, hey, if you, if you guys got people out here to monitor, you know, people that are abusing the amount of hours they can stay and inconvenience the neighbors that actually live there, they said we would make a boatload of money, so, thank you.
Bullock? Thank you. President? Back to you, Mr. Dorsey.
Thank you. My next request is related to parking benefits. How many city employees are receiving a parking benefit like the city council's benefits of a dedicated or otherwise, a parking in a city-owned garage, whether it's a dedicated space or general space in a garage? How many city employees are receiving such benefits where it's paid for by the agency or paid for by the city, rather than, you know, just an arrangement made through the agency where it's actually being paid for by the employee through salary deduction or something like that? Where it's actually being paid for by the city? How many employees at which garages, at which rate, and the total cost associated with, with, with that? And I don't know, are there, I know that there are plenty where we outright receive a parking space benefit. Are there agencies who pay a discount, like, pay, pay to subsidize the total cost of a space where the employee is paying?
That, I don't know directly. When we bill an agency for parking, they pay the full amount that's due to us for that parking. Whatever arrangements they've made with their employees, whether to be, whether that employee then pays the agency or pays a portion of that, you'd have to go to the agencies to ask that question. We don't know those arrangements. But we can tell you, you know, the rest of the information.
So whenever you bill a city agency for a personnel's parking, you're always billing the city at market rate?
Well, it's, we do have a city employee rate that we charge at, at garages, and it's, it is generally less than the market rate. Frankly, we do the same thing with large other private groups. If they come as a group, we'll give them a discount, too. And, you know, you do have to realize, when I first started at the Parking Authority, none of these people got charged anything. We had to start somewhere. And so it is, it has been a discounted rate off of the market rate.
I see. So you, you discount for bulk, for, like, private organizations as well?
Oh, we do, yep.
Well, do you have...
In those circumstances, we, we realize the savings, too, because, you know, we're not having to chase down, you know, 200 Parkers, we're only chasing down one payment. So there are savings associated with it, too, that can justify that discount.
Do you have a rubric or some kind of write-up that you can provide that explains your basis for discounting?
For, for discounting private ones, yes, we do.
Yeah.
Yep.
I'd like to get a copy of that.
Sure.
And I assume that you apply a similar... And I assume that you apply a similar logic to discounting for the city?
Yep. Oh, for the city. And again, you know, we've raised the, the city rate along with the market rates as well too, but it is below the typical discounts that we've given to, to the private sector. And again, we started at zero 15 years ago for, for that rate, but we have increased it.
All right. So, let me just try to clarify here. There's a market rate that you assess for a parking space, and that varies from one garage to the next.
Based on demand, what the rates are in the area, right?
Um, and then there's a charge that you send to a city agency for an employee to have a parking space that's paid for by the agency, and that's not necessarily the market rate?
That's correct.
So, in the previous request that I made, I guess that's, I, I want to know in that request what that total cost is, but I'd also like to see a comparative analysis of what, what the value would be if we were charging market rate for all of those spaces as well.
Sure. Councilman, if you could, could you restate each request and sort of delineate between the two at this point?
Sure.
It sounds like if there's multiple in terms of breaking these up a little bit.
Sure. So, I'd like to know how many city employees are having their parking paid for by the city agency that they work for, by, you know, by the city. How many, and at what rate, I would say in each garage, but that's really beside my concern, really at what rate, how many? And, and separately, and so I can see the, the total cost to the city to give these park, these parking benefits, which I consider subsidies for driving cars. And then I'd also like to see what the market rate, the market value of all of that would be, if we weren't, you know, I, I'd like to understand how much we're discounting each of those, so how, so we know how much Parking Authority is undercharging the city. I think that covers it.
We can provide that.
Pardon me?
We can provide that.
Cool. I think, just, I have one other question to dovetail on what Councilwoman Sneed was asking Mr. Goodwin before. Just, can you clarify for us some of your city stat metrics? When a 311 request is made for an unlawfully parked car, what's the metric for on-time response to such a request?
If it's during the regular workday, sir, between, I would say, 6:00 AM.
Can you speak directly?
Sorry, if it's during the, the regular workday between, say, 6:00 AM and 10:00 PM, it's, it's handled within a matter of, of hours. Once it goes through 311 and they dispatch it over the air to the officer on the street.
And so, what if I make that report at 11:00 on Friday night?
Then we would not get it until Saturday morning.
Saturday morning?
Yes, sir.
And what if I make it on Saturday night?
During the day?
Saturday, 11:00 PM.
Between 8:00 AM and 10:30, it would be answered on Saturday.
If I make that report on, at 11:00 on Saturday night, is it going to get responded to on Sunday, or is it going to get responded to on Monday?
It should get responded to on Sunday. They should send it, communicate it through the air on Sunday morning.
What happens when a report is made to 311 on a Saturday night that it, I mean, it's, if it's a parking problem on Saturday night, and it's not a parking problem on Sunday morning, you know what I'm saying? Like, like, the citizen's concern is that there's an unlawfully parked car that night. I've often heard that these things could or should be handled by the police department outside of, no? No.
They normally will send.
Really do, really do need more resources. I heard last night there was like 200 vacancies in DOT. We, uh...
233, I think.
233 vacancies.
I think that's what the number.
I really feel for you, and I, I hope that we can get some more positions in here.
Sir, I'd be very honest with you. I, I think with the manpower that I have, we do a pretty adequate job. We do fall short sometimes because of, and I'll be very honest with you, the leave request that comes in, we, we do have folks that call out, so that sometimes short us. But for most calls that are made and put across the air through the radio, we answer to. So, we have a pretty good 100% rate of closing out.
And do you have enough people that on, during peak hours, like for a place, for like Charles Street, that you're able to consistently send out officers to, to write citations so that in coordination with the, the peak hours towers?
On peak restriction routes, we have someone assigned to each peak restrict, restriction route in the morning and in the afternoon.
Okay.
So, they have to ride up and down the entire route, back and forth. And in doing that, they also have those 311 requests as well.
Yeah.
Mr. President?
Just wanted to, to follow up and really, I'd like Councilman Dorsey to know that, and ask the chief to, to talk. Again, I asked a similar question last night and referenced Councilman about evening and nighttime enforcement from them, and asked the chief if they had considered a model where they have people working consistently through the night. And he, I just wanted him to, to talk about that for you, so that you could hear about the stuff that he's working on.
So, over the past year, Councilman, we've been trying to put together overnight crew, but what I said to my team was, we need to make sure we maintain our balance that we have now, and as we add more personnel on, we could bring in another squad of personnel. But at the same time, we have to work with my, my colleagues here in finance to make sure that we can afford to bring that number on. So, right now, we have individuals who have already agreed to work the shift. We just have to get the personnel in place to do it.
From finance perspective, is there some reluctance to see the vacant positions changed for the, the pins moved for vacant positions to create more enforcement positions? I mean, is, is finance looking at this like, we're fine having these vacancies because it means we have a savings that?
No, in this case, we, in a service like this where there's revenue generating positions, we want them to fill the existing positions for sure. You know, historically, since I've been here, we've never been able to get really that close to having all of them filled at one time. You know, within their budget, we would definitely be willing to work with them about where the enforcement is better targeted, whether that's overnight or at certain part of the days. Now, if we were to add positions into the budget, if we were to look at that in a future year, we would want to make sure that that's at a minimum paid for with additional revenue. But even within the existing budget, we would definitely work with them to figure out what are the right times and what are the right spots where the enforcement should happen. The challenge, as DOT talked about a little bit last night, is that, you know, based on the schedule, the, the folks that they have do both parking enforcement and traffic management. So, they're usually using folks during the morning hours, I guess, in a rush hour for those functions, and then other parts of the day, they're using them for the, more of the direct enforcement.
So, you know, Councilman, just to give you an idea, the challenge I've had since I took over this division in 18, we had 18 vacancies. We sent over 20 applicants. We only got 10. And so, it's, it's a struggle getting them through the...
I know that you have challenges with hiring.
Okay.
I know that. I just want to...
Can we jump to Councilwoman Sneed for a second?
I was just wondering, what's, is it the pay that's not high enough?
No, it's, it's getting individuals through the commissioning process, and then ultimately getting them through the, your analysis testing.
Drug testing.
Yeah. That's, that's, I pray when I have applicants that go over and they tell me going to the clinic, I go into my prayer mode. I'm sorry, I'm, I'm heavy into my praying, but I go into my praying mode, hoping that I can preach, brother, I will. I pray that I can get them out of the...
We have a resident preacher on the council right here, too. Some spiritual support. The council's here to help you in any way we can.
Yes, sir.
I'm going to, I have one quick comment before I duck out of here, because I have a 12:00 meeting. But Pete, I, I just want to commend you and the Parking Authority team. You guys are incredibly responsive. Sandra, David, Candace, Steve Robinson, everyone at the agency is just incredibly responsive. You're a pleasure to work with. You guys are truly technocrats, which I really appreciate as a, as a nerd myself. And you guys are truly a model agency in Baltimore city government, so please keep up the great work and thank for every, thank you for everything you do.
Thank you. Actually, Pete, I'm sorry I didn't ask this question last night, but this one's for you. Have we, with the increasing amount of opportunities for like car sharing, have we looked at, we know that we do it for Zipcar, we know that in the garages, there's Maven's spots?
Yep.
Have we looked at providing or looking at that program and providing just car-share parking locations as opposed to the partnership with just one particular, one particular vendor? Because I think that there will be more and more of these as more and more folks, and Councilman Dorsey continues his efforts to get us all out of a single-use car, single-occupied cars. Can we, have you guys thought about that or even considered that kind of movement?
We, we have, actually, and we recently put out a request for proposals to bring in other car-sharing organizations and to be able to utilize the on-street spaces. And actually, we did get two great responses. Zipcar wants to continue that relationship, and Maven. Unfortunately, as you probably read in the paper, Maven is pulling out of Baltimore. It's a business decision. But we're constantly looking at other options to bring other car-sharing organizations in. Now, in terms of the spots themselves and reserving them just for any car-sharing organization, we've taken a look at that as well too. We are concerned that, you know, if we do place these locations, and obviously oftentimes they're in areas of the city that have high parking demand and limited supply, that we wouldn't see the utilization of those spaces that would justify reserving them just for their use. But we're constantly looking at that, though, to determine what's the best way in order to encourage more car-sharing, lower parking demand. At the end of the day, it's a parking solution as well too. That's our mission, to find parking solutions, because if you can reduce vehicle ownership, that creates more spaces then for people who do need to continue to own cars. So, yeah, we're constantly looking at that.
Thank you. And I'm a little, I did know that Maven was leaving. I'll be deleting the app from my phone.
Very unfortunately, yeah.
Thank you. Thank you.
Not just here, but in Boston, New York, they're, they're leaving a lot of cities.
They're leaving. Wow.
Not sure why.
Thank you.
I have a question of equity.
Councilman Dorsey?
Thank you. With the recently passed scooter, dockless vehicle law, one of the provisions that was taken very seriously was, was placement of scooters in areas outside of like the downtown core areas, specifically placed in communities of low income and low vehicle ownership. Have we ever had any discussion of doing that with vendors like?
Zipcar.
Like Zipcar?
It's already in the contract already.
Can you talk about that? Because I know, I know, I don't see Zipcar outside of the core area.
Yeah. A certain number of their vehicles are required to be placed in low-vehicle ownership areas. And, you know, when we were putting together the initial RFP and the initial contract, we had to negotiate what that number would be. And, you know, Zipcar was also hoping to be able to increase that number. But I, I know that they've, they've abided by the contract in terms of that, that number.
Can you provide us kind of?
We can give you the contract.
The basics of that, yeah. He can give us the contract, or just interested in those numbers.
So, yeah.
Like, how many vehi, how many spaces do they have in the city, and where are the ones that, that meet that requirement, that, that are counted toward that requirement? Because it's possible that there are some low-vehicle ownership areas, maybe by Census Track, that are also high-income, so it's, you know, I don't know. But whereas I think the intention is low-income, low-vehicle ownership, you know. So, I'd like to know, how many cars, how many spaces does Zipcar have in the city, and how many are counted toward whatever this requirement is, and what are the location of those specific ones that are counted toward that requirement?
Sure. Can send you that. Yep.
Any other questions? Being, no other questions. Thank you, Pete.
Yep.
This committee is in recess until 12:30, when we'll have the panel for community development and blight elimination. Thank you.